Call a meeting to order, please. Vice Chairman Fisher, leave us an invocation, please, sir.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for our many blessings and for this area in which we live. And tonight, our hearts and prayers go out to all those that are suffering from the floods, the natural disasters from the two hurricanes, and especially ask that you look over all those first responders, fire and rescue, National Guard people, the armed forces that are helping, be with all of them and protect them in this great time of need. We ask for your guidance this evening in our business for the citizens of Frederick County. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Sir Frazier Lofton, would you leave us in the pledge, please?
Face a flag for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, sir. Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have two proposed amendments. One would be to add Tab I, which is the report from Joint Public Works Committee and Landfill Committee, to the consent agenda. There's really no action items on there for the board. And the second would be to pull Tab N from your agenda, which is the comprehensive plan amendment discussion. The applicant has requested that we take that up at some point in the future.
All right. Any others?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add one item under the First Board of Supervisors comments, one item there. That would be appointment of a county administrator and approval of the contract with the county administrator.
All right, sir. So they've heard the proposal. Have you heard a motion?
Second. So move.
Motion to amend the agenda as described. Is there a second?
Second.
The second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose no. Our amended agenda is stated. All right. So that brings us to an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda items only that are not subject to public hearing. Did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
No sign up. All right. That brings us to the Board of Supervisors comments.
I'm sorry? I don't believe you took action on the consent agenda items.
I'm sorry, I thought we did. Apologies. We amended it and didn't take action on it. So I'd entertain a motion to adopt the amended consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose no? All right. Consent agenda is adopted. That would bring us to Board of Supervisors comments and the amended item. Vice Chairman Fisher.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors appoint Chris C. Tierney as county administrator effective September 13th, 2017, and authorize the chairman to sign the contract on behalf of the county.
Heard the motions, are second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion? All right. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Tierney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate your hard work and your dedication and look forward to continuing that.
As do I.
All right. That will bring us to committee appointments. Thank you. Red Bud, Frederick County Planning Commission, are we ready?
Mr. Chairman, there's an opening for the Planning Commission for those that are interested. They can apply online and/or see me. There's also an opening for Historic Resource Advisory Board. Again, if you had an interest in that, apply online or please see me.
All right, sir. And just for everyone's information, both those folks would need to be residents of the Red Bud District. We would appreciate any expressions of interest. Shawnee Representative?
Not ready, Mr. Chairman.
Community Policy Team? Waiting for a recommendation?
We have no candidate for that one at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Opekin, Supervisor Wells is not with us, and that brings us to the end of September. Thank you. Request from the Stevens City Fire and Rescue Company for carryforward of funds.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request for $214,105.51 and the corresponding appropriation of the carryforward, please.
Thank you. Heard the motions, are second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Any discussion? All right. Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. That will bring us to the request from the Commissioner for refunds.
Mr. Chairman, there's two requests. One is from the Toyota Lease Trust for $3,305.40, and this is a result of vehicles that were sold or moved out of the county. It's been reviewed by the county attorney and recommended for approval.
Would the Board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the refund to Toyota Lease Trust in the amount of $3,305.40 and the approval of the supplemental appropriation.
This motion to approve is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
The second item is for Gander Mountain, number 342, in the amount of $7,149.80 for business license fees, and this is a result of the Gander Mountain going out of business. It's been reviewed and consented to by the county attorney.
Would the Board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the refund of $7,149.80 and authorize supplemental appropriation.
Motion to approve is our second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there discussion? Anyone? All right. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. All right. Thank you. That brings us to proposed legislative agenda discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. What you have before you this evening is staff's initial attempt or draft at a 2018 legislative agenda for the county. This is a little different format than last year. Last year was a much longer agenda with several different items on it. What we have tried to do this year is consolidate that somewhat. We have identified six primary legislative initiatives that the county would focus on this year, and then underneath those, we have other positions on a variety of topics. This is not an all-encompassing list of legislative items because as bills get introduced or proposed, we will, staff will continue to monitor those, and if there are items of interest to the Board or that affect Frederick County, then we would weigh in pro or con on those items as the General Assembly session is progressing. What staff is seeking tonight is an endorsement by the Board. Once that, if staff receives that, we will then communicate our legislative agenda to our elected representatives, our senator and three delegates. Then we'll also convey it to VACO as well to see if some of those could be included as part of their legislative, overall legislative agenda. A couple items of interest for the Board to point out that, these are in no particular order, but one of the priorities is a reconsideration of Senate Bill 549 that changed the proffer legislation. Having attended the VACO Region Six Summit with Delegate Minchu, he had made mention that that, there may be some legislation coming back to deal with that particular bill because it apparently did not have the effect that a lot of the development community thought it would have. They found it to be sort of a hindrance to their communication with elected officials because a lot of localities really don't know how, what parameters they can operate under with regard to that bill, so there should be some action relative to that. And then also, funding for transportation improvements in particular. We're seeking assistance from the General Assembly to help us lobby our federal representatives to do something with I-81. I know at that VACO summit, and it's been in the paper a few times as well, Delegate Minchu has identified that as a priority of his also in trying to re-energize the I-81 coalition and try to do something, whether it's widening or some type of improvement to 81. So those are two things I wanted to point out to the Board because I know that those were items of interest from last year's legislative agenda as well.
Thank you, sir. Comments? Supervisor Lofton?
Just one, under number six, funding for transportation improvements, and Mr. Tibbs has already expanded on the need to have our legislature work with Congress to do that, but I was wondering, we're a little vague on increased funding for local transportation improvements. One of the things we just learned was that they have decreased the amount of revenue sharing funds from $10 million annually to $5 million annually. I wonder if we need to be more specific about that particular item and still support increased funding for all local transportation improvements? Or do you think that will make any impact at all? I think it could impact us quite a bit with the reduced funding for revenue sharing. I think I'd like to be a little more specific about that.
I think we can work that into the wording just fine. I mean, we have continued to emphasize our desire to see revenue sharing continue at higher rates instead of lower. They seem to be intent on doing away with it, but it does not hurt to keep campaigning for it.
Okay.
Can do that. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Ewing?
I wondered, I have special interest in is number seven, unfunded mandates. I think that's one that, we do it every year, it doesn't help, but I think we need to get stronger in telling the state that if they're going to propose a project, they fund it instead of putting it on the locality to fund it for them. They might as well take the hit as well as the locality.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Supervisor Dunn?
This is going to be revised further as we go into the legislative process, correct?
Well, it will be, but I mean, as the legislature reacts to and begins their work, we will need to be reactive to whatever, what they're doing. What we will do, though, if the Board endorses this document, is use this as the template for discussion with our legislators, and we went to our federal representatives last year as well, and we'll do that again.
Okay. That's fine.
Does that answer the question?
It answers my question. I would also like just to reiterate my concerns on the legislation that deals with proffers.
Yes. Comments? Staff looking for formal action? We certainly have consensus.
Yes, sir. I would like a motion from the Board so we can...
Seek one.
So move.
And we have one. In a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose no? We're unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Where are we? Does that bring us?
Yes.
To the Finance Committee meeting. Supervisor Slaughter?
The Finance Committee met on August the 16th at 8:00 a.m. The following items were considered under, considered and recommended for approval under consent agenda, which were items number one, two, and three, and I would so move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Item number four, the Horizon Goodwill Industries, Inc., requested a real property tax exemption. The committee recommended denial of the exemption, and I would so move. And I'm not sure, do we need a motion on that?
Let's do that.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item number five, the Winchester Regional Airport Executive Director request a fiscal year 18 airport capital fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $2,165,000 and a fiscal year 18 general fund supplemental appropriation in the amount of $209,674. The amount represents airport capital budget for fiscal year 18, and the local contribution is the $209,674. The committee recommended approval, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Items number seven and eight, actually, item number seven, we had discussion on real property tax relief for the elderly and disabled, and hopefully we will continue to work through that for the next budget cycle. The committee also had discussion on the workman's compensation and accident injury coverage for volunteer fire and rescue, and the committee recommended moving that forward. And I don't believe we need a motion for that.
If we're going to implement VACO's recommendation, I think probably the Board should endorse that.
Okay. I did check with Mrs. Schiffler, our finance director, and it does not require a supplemental appropriation at this time. That will probably come back to the Board in March or April, but there is sufficient funds in our insurance line item to take care of that request. Okay, so I will make the motion that we recommend implementing VACORP's recommendation for workers' compensation for volunteer fire and EMS.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
And item number nine, the Finance Audit Committee Charter adopted by the Board of Supervisors requires an annual review and assessment. The charter was in the Board packet. The committee recommended no changes to the charter, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing done. Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. That brings us to the Code and Ordinance Committee, which we... who is presenting.
I am.
Supervisor Dunn? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the Code and Ordinance Committee met on August 23rd at 3:00 p.m., and there are three items that are going to require consideration by the Board. The first one was a proposed amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 89, Volunteer Membership, Section 89.2. It simplifies the background for, background check for volunteers. This is a technical amendment. The Board passed this unanimously, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, these are motions to set these for public hearing.
Set for public hearing. Would you like to amend your motion to that effect?
Make the motion to amend for public hearing.
And second?
And I would so move.
And second.
Second concurs. All right. Any further discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing? Chair votes aye and the motion carries. Supervisor Dunn?
Second item is a technical amendment to, again, a proposed amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 122 on nuisances, proposed section 122 hyphen 11 on benefine lab cleanup. This proposal would go and allow the county to do whatever is necessary to clean up labs at the expense of those who were convicted of such illegal activity. Committee voted unanimously for this, and I would so move.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Third item, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Third item is a proposed amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 155 on Taxation, Section 155 hyphen 3. This was an amendment that basically said that mobile homes will be treated as other homes for real estate property taxation, and that there will be a uniform date of March 1st. This was adopted unanimously by the committee, and I would so move.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any discussion? Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, there were two additional items. One was a noise ordinance, and one was dealing with a discussion on what are discharged. The noise ordinance will be dealt with at a future meeting. There were some revisions on that that will be coming.
Thank you, sir. All right. That'll bring us to a public hearing, proposed abandonment of the Public Road Secondary Route 708, Gold Orchard Road, portion thereof. Mr. Ruddy, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is a cleanup exercise, obviously, with Gold Orchard Road, and the Board having previously approved a resolution to abandon back in 2015. And now it's your August 9th meeting. We were given the go-ahead to sign and advertise the abandonment of the road section and see if anybody needed and required warranted a public hearing on this item. Nobody has been forthcoming to this point, but of course, we can continue with the public hearing. Ultimately, the Board will need to adopt the resolution that's part of your agenda, which completes the abandonment of the road. Happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions, Mr. Ruddy? Anyone?
Questions?
Yes, sir. Special Lofton?
With the abandonment of the road, does that property get deeded to the owner?
It's actually a prescriptive right-of-way. So different to Security Drive, which we did recently, where it was a fee simple right-of-way to the county that we had to convey back. This one already exists as a prescriptive right-of-way, therefore, it falls to the property owner.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Says a public hearing, would anyone like to comment concerning the proposed abandonment of Gold Orchard Road, a portion thereof? Anyone? We'll close the public hearing. Would the Board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve a resolution stating our support for the abandonment of the Public Road, Secondary Road 708, Gold Orchard Road.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And a second. Is there any further discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion carries. That will bring us to a public hearing, ordinance amendment to Frederick County Code, Chapter 165. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is a public hearing for a proposed amendment to Chapter 165, the zoning ordinance, to allow slaughterhouses in the RA Rural Area Zoning District through an approved conditional use permit, or CUP. Currently, the manufacturing of meat products is only allowed in our M2 Industrial General Zoning District as a by-right use. Staff has drafted a revision to the zoning ordinance to include slaughterhouses as a conditional use in the RA zoning district. We've drafted a new definition for slaughterhouses and provided additional supplemental use regulations. As defined, slaughterhouses are establishments primarily engaged in the slaughtering or processing of meats for human consumption or other related products. The word slaughterhouse, as used in this definition, shall not be construed to prohibit persons who are actually farmers from killing their own cattle, sheep, swine, goats, and fowl for their own family use. This would also not prohibit individuals from processing deer meat on their own property for their own consumption. Supplemental use regulations for slaughterhouses would include, all buildings, animal unloading and staging areas, and animal pens shall be a minimum of 100 feet from all property lines. Total building square footage should not exceed 20,000 square feet. All operations would be under roof and screened from view from adjoining properties and public streets. An additional buffering and screening may be required as specified by the zoning administrator. Additional conditions may be assigned as part of a conditional use permit application. The Development Review and Regulations Committee discussed this amendment at their April meeting, and this item was presented for discussion by the Planning Commission in June and came before the Board of Supervisors in July. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item on August 2nd, and there were no public comments. The Planning Commission recommended approval. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors on this proposed ordinance amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We also have the applicants who requested the ordinance amendment from Gentle Harvest here this evening, and I believe they're signed up to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Klein? Supervisor Lofton?
A couple of questions. You've noted that someone wishing to cut up deer that they have killed on their own property, but if I'm reading this correctly, if someone wanted to cut up deer for other people that have killed, that would consider, would be considered as a slaughterhouse?
That is not, I apologize for the confusion. That would not be the case. If they want to take it to another property and get it processed for their own consumption, If they want to take it to another property and get it processed for their own consumption, that would be okay. The difference between a slaughterhouse and kind of self-processing is a slaughterhouse operation is more commercial in nature, and it's done at a designated facility, whereas the slaughtering of deer and other type of onsite uses for onsite on your property and for your own consumption, it's not subject to any kind of other, you know, health and code regulations.
Okay, so if my neighbor is processing deer, and I kill a deer and take it to him, that is allowed, he does not have to get a CUP for that?
You are absolutely correct.
One more, if I may?
Sure.
The the distance between the property line and any buildings, pens, whatever, is 100 feet? Is that some kind of a, just a standard that you use, or how was that arrived at? It doesn't seem like that might not be quite far enough.
It's not a standard, there's no kind of industry standard, per se. We did, in our drafting of the ordinance, look at other localities and how they approached setbacks. In addition, our zoning ordinance currently requires a 100-foot setback for properties that are six acres or more in the RA, so we felt that because it was, because that was a standard we already had in our ordinance, that it would be applicable to this use as well. That doesn't mean we couldn't prescribe a larger setback as part of supplemental uses if the board so moved, or that an additional setback could be assigned during the conditional use permit process.
Others? Supervisor Slaughter?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Klein, I'm not sure if they're for you or maybe the applicants, but if we have a slaughterhouse of this size, of a 20,000-square-foot operation in any of that matter, what type of regulatory agencies would provide oversight, and would that be a part of your CUP?
As part of the conditional use permit, they would obviously need to get comments from reviewing agencies. Those are county agencies, such as Public Works and Building Inspections, and also related entities like Virginia Department of Transportation, and also the Virginia Department of Health. The Virginia Department of Health does have standards, and I'll let the applicant speak to some of the other standards that they adhere to as part of their process, if that would be okay.
We'll come back to you, sir.
I'm assuming EPA and that type of thing would be incorporated in some of that, and we can come back to that later, but that you've dovetailed into my second question, which was, as a part of the CUP, if we allow this in a rural setting, the transportation of the livestock to the processor, I'm assuming because of the size of this, and again, the applicant may speak to it later, but I'm assuming that maybe we'd be utilizing tractor-trailers, and so when you look at the transportation of getting the livestock to the processing plant, as a part of your CUP, you would be sure that the transportation infrastructure would allow, I mean, we hear when we're talking in our transportation forums, that we have school buses on roads that can barely get through, so that environment obviously would be a rural setting, and so I want to be sure that that is a part of the process.
As part of the conditional use permit process, we would require comments from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Also, our Assistant Director for Transportation would likely do a review as well, if for some reason it involved a street that wasn't otherwise maintained by, you know, VDOT, but also to talk about VDOT standards and the appropriateness of the transportation infrastructure for serving a desired site for a slaughterhouse operation.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Other questions? Supervisor Dunn?
Calling up on Mr. Lofton's comments, if the current CUP, if this passes with a 100-foot designation, and an applicant comes back in at a later point in time, and for whatever reason, the board thinks that the 100-foot is inappropriate, does the board have the prerogative of saying that in this particular CUP, we think that the 100-foot is not appropriate, and something else, or if we pass this at the 100-foot, is that total?
The supplemental use standard is a minimum of 100 feet, so if at such time, whether the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors, or even the zoning administrator felt that a increased setback was warranted because of adjoining land uses or adjacency of other properties, we could prescribe a higher standard, whether that be 150 feet, 200 feet, whatever that may be. The minimum setback would obviously be 100 feet, and that would be the standard.
Mr. Chairman, one other question? And in the county right now, where we have a few processors, is this 20,000-foot approximately double the existing processors?
The applicant's current operation is about 11,000 square feet. Again, when we conducted our review, we looked at other localities, and 20,000 seemed to be where other localities were kind of capping that requirement. We also consulted with the applicant, and their desire was for a facility of up to 20,000 square feet, so we felt like that was an appropriate number to include.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just for clarity, I might add that the proposal this evening is to amend ordinance?
Right, I understand.
And not to consider a CUP, but once a CUP is approved, it goes with the land, and the restrictions stay as they were when it was approved?
So Mr. Klein's comments about this just 100 feet being just a minimum, a future CUP could say that under this particular case, it would have to be greater than that in another case?
Case by case basis, that's the reason for the CUP, yes.
That's just why I wanted to clarify that this did not lock in that, so that if an applicant said, "I'm going to put it at 100 feet because of this," I want to know that the county has some flexibility.
Yeah.
One more question, if I may? To follow up on that, we're saying that total building square footage should not exceed 20,000 square feet, that does not include holding pens, it just includes what is under roof?
It would include the holding pens, because the supplemental requirement is that all holding pens and staging areas would also be under roof, so that would fall under that 20,000-square-foot threshold.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Klein? Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, whomever or all of you are welcome to come and comment.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brooke Middleton. I'm here tonight on behalf of General Harvest with Larry Clark, who is our CFO, and Chris Damewood, who is the farm manager. In 2016, we purchased the De Havens facility, and we are currently using that facility for our own livestock, but in looking at that facility and the site, it became apparent to us it would be better and more feasible to buy a farm and build a building that's state-of-the-art on it, rather than try to do something with that site. So our hopes are that we can buy a farm in the right place, and we're looking at sites, and we'd like to hear from people that may have a site, and put it in the right place where it's wanted in the community, and will be an asset to the community, and be able to process our own animals, and then also animals for the people in the community that have livestock and want them processed. I would be happy to answer any questions, and so will Chris and Larry tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions for these gentlemen, anyone? Supervisor Dunn?
Mr. Middleton, my understanding is that the primary purpose for this is to meet your own needs, not to have a large processing plant for areas farther out, is that correct?
I missed the last part, but the primary
Your primary, your primary facility is to meet your own needs?
Yes, sir.
And that you are not looking at this point in time to have cattle brought in from, you know, 300 miles away?
No, no, it would be a local, community-supported agriculture, and I would encourage you to look at what General Harvest is doing, but the whole idea is local agricultural and food sold locally.
Okay, thank you.
That being said, we would be interested in, and would be open to taking in animals from local farms in the area too, but like you said, 300 miles away.
All right, any other questions for these gentlemen, anyone?
Are USDA-regulated, DEQ, everything like that.
We're happy to have anything else you'd like to add. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Other than if someone has a farm or a location they think
Hopefully everyone heard that one.
Mr. Clark, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to comment concerning these ordinance amendments? Mr. Anderson, sir?
I'll be quick, Mr. Fisher. My name's Paul Anderson. I'm on the Board of Directors, Frederick County Farm Bureau. This ordinance here, I think, is a great opportunity for agriculture. There's a lot of things that happen in agriculture, and it's going to make a lot of changes, and when you can bring things into the area that supports agriculture, I think it's really important. I like the conditional use permit a lot better than the zoning, because a conditional use permit, I think you can keep a lot better tabs on it, and zoning is there forever, and you can't change it. But Frederick County Farm Bureau, we represent a big majority of county farmers, and we do totally support what you're doing here.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to comment concerning these proposed ordinance amendments? Anyone? All right, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anything you all would like to add? Thanks, sir. How would the board like to handle this one?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board approve the proposed amendment to Chapter 165, zoning ordinance to allow slaughterhouses in the Rural Area Zoning District as a conditional use.
All right.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? Supervisor Slaughter?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells is absent. Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Dunn?
Aye.
Supervisor Ewing?
Aye.
Chair votes no. The motion carries. All right. That brings us that one we postponed, amended our agenda. Or liaison reports, are there any? Citizen comments on any issue whatsoever? Thank you, sir.
Yes, Alan Morrison from Gainsborough District. First, I would like to offer congratulations to Mr. Tierney, an expedient and wise decision that also saves the taxpayer a little pocketful of money in the process, and I certainly do appreciate that. Most of the time, when somebody comes up here, they're generally complaining, whining, or griping about something, and I just wanted to take a moment to extend thanks to the elected officials and to staff for having to deal with a lot of sometimes highly difficult situations where emotions tend to run high, and so that is just a moment of appreciation. And I'd like to also make an announcement and offer an invitation. This Sunday, September 17th, is the 230th birthday of the official signing of the U.S. Constitution. This is a document that is foundational to the operations of this nation, and indeed each of the states and localities. It's also a document that in recent years has come under constant attack and attempts to erode its meaning, and it's very important that people today have a better understanding of what the U.S. Constitution is and what it means to each of us, and it seems to be a big question mark to a lot of people. This Saturday, September 16th, at noon in Mount Hebron Cemetery, there will be a celebration of the birthday of the Constitution, and this will be at the Veterans Facility in the inn, all the way back by Pleasant Valley Road. It's about a 40-minute presentation, there will be a variety of speakers on what the meaning of the Constitution is, the history of the Constitution, and the meaning of it to the nation, and it is free, that's even in your price category. It's open to the general public, and I would certainly like to invite each of you to attend this ceremony, because it is an immense and vital concern to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to comment on any issue at all? Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close the public comment. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Fisher?[1738.11]